So we'll call the meeting to order at 7:01. And can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
All right, second. Any discussion changes, things to add? All righty, all in favor? And now the minutes, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the October meeting? There it is, all right. Second.
Okay.
Any corrections, comments, discussion on the minutes? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes? All righty. So what we're going to do is go to our regular reports, start with the director report, treasurer report, and then the committee reports, then talk about, we'll probably talk about in the director's reports, I saw it in there, insurance question. We have to do an executive session for the director review and then talk about the 2025 budget. You want to stick with that order or anything else? Then just go, okay. Let's plow ahead then. So, Q, director report.
All right. Things have slowed down a bit in terms of participation in the live, at the library. We haven't seen us, our numbers are not quite as high. But if you look statistically, it's, it's the same. It happens every year, about the same thing. It always goes down in October, November. So, you know, but it's still, it's been quiet. It's definitely been quieter at the library, which, you know, nice to see people in, but it's okay too. You can see all the programs we have coming up. It's gonna be a busy month.
Up on Saturday?
I was planning on just kind of having it, coming in, see, make sure everything's all set up and then just have them go as they want. So they seem to kind of run themselves. We do have Holiday Market coming up, Cheer Yoga, which is also happening wonderfully. We have Cheer Yoga set up now through June. I'm gonna do the first Thursday of every month, all the way up till June, so we are pretty good with that.
Are you getting the same group every time, or?
Yep. It seems like it's about, it's kind of consisting of the same group, so. And, but there are new people who come in and out too, so it's, it's been good. Jody goes to it, she said it's fantastic. So, definitely good words, thought it. Obviously, the Holiday Market is coming up. We are doing pictures with Santa again, so we're gonna be doing the free pictures with Santa. They've got Santa and I've got a photographer coming, they're all set and ready to go. We are gonna take walk-ins this year, but we do ask that people can make an appointment, it just might make it easier for us. Blood drive coming up, and then gingerbread houses, another big thing. If we can start spreading the word, if we're doing another emergency preparedness event. We're doing it at the fire hall this year, this time, and it's a bag event, which means that if you sign up, you get a free bag of all of this stuff that's good for an emergency. I don't remember what all of this stuff is, but it's on there. Can probably pull it up, but it's, it's a bunch of stuff. Yes, yep, I have the flyer, it's in, it's actually on the website right now. But the, you have to sign up with, by going to their website and doing something on their QR code. But, I mean, it, it seems like it's quite a bit of stuff, so it's like a backpack just filled with things, flashlights and tape and masks and gloves and, you know, just all the kind of things you might need in a pinch.
Is there a max number of pigeons?
No, I didn't, they didn't know what it was. I told them that we could fit 100, thinking that was as big as, I didn't know how big the fire hall was, so I said 100, and they're like, okay. So if we can make that happen, that would be great, so.
I think we can share it on Facebook.
That would be great. It is on, oh, I didn't put it up, the date in there, sorry, it's on Thursday, December 12th at, at 5 o'clock. And I did go through their, their process to register and it didn't, it was not that, that difficult, so. But we'll have, obviously, people will be here to help out if they need. In terms of, our programming's still going really well. For the pick, for the lanterns that, or the pumpkin pickup, we gave out about probably 85 to almost 100 pumpkins, and we got 50 back. So that's, for me, that's a great number, so. That's about the same, about the same, yeah. And the kids at Teen Night also did pumpkins, and some of them did too, because they were so excited, they were just like, oh, can we do another one like that? The trunk or treating went really well, 200 people, about 150 kids to 50 adults. About 20 cars, it was very good, went really well. And we still are doing our free tech help and people are still coming to that, so last month we had three people coming and asking for help, so, and I know we've got someone else who's planning on coming this next month, so that's been pretty good. And in conjunction with that, I told the Steventown seniors that I would go to see them on, I'm gonna meet them at their Thursday meeting, which is the 5th of December, and I'm gonna give them a presentation about all the things that the library has and just kind of show them how they can get hoopla and how they can get Libby and, you know, those kinds of things. So we're gonna do that, but then Shell, who does the free tech help, she has a ton of senior programs to do, so we're gonna try and work together and get some senior technology programs to the seniors through the library. We're also going to try and bring in some arts programs, I've got some ideas for getting some arts over to them too, so we're, we're trying. And they seem, for the most part, they seem pretty acceptable, accepting of everything, so. We did have the knitting group back last week, which was really, really nice, but they'll be here when the Lebanon library's not available, so. Circulation is down, same as, you know, same thing as the, our daily visits, everything kind of go, gets put down. What is up, though, is our registered patrons, we've been adding more patrons to the list, so we're now up at 707 without expired cards, which is up from December of last year to 674, so it's been pretty good, and I have completed, and I'm up to date with our reaching out to any patron who has an expired card. So that's actually, that database is getting pretty solid now that we know where everything is. We'll go through all that. Did add a lot of stuff to the collection this month because of, I didn't do very much last month, so this month got doubtful. And as everybody now knows, we have 18,004 items in our collection. Uh, let's see, so I wanted to just publicly say thank you to Larry Eckhart for bringing all the pumpkins to us. We had to go and pick them up, but it was still, you know, now that we have older kids, it's much easier to do. But they, they gave us the pumpkins with no word, no, not even a question, every year, great, so. And the Teen Night went really well as well for Halloween. And actually, there's another one. So DA meeting, I did go to a virtual DA meeting this week, this last month. The biggest news to know from Upper Hudson is that we, oh, there's two big things. One is that through Central Library Funds, we are now able to get the New York Times online, available for anybody in the system. If you have a library card and you have, actually, you don't even have to have a library card, if you have the code that will be up on our website, hopefully shortly, you can access it from home. And it's basically just giving you a one-day subscription, but then if you want to do it again, just put in the same code and get it for tomorrow. Just keep on going. So it's free and it's available here at the library and it will be available. So, that's a, it's a huge cost, which is why we've never gotten it before, so the fact that Central, the Library Funds were able to be allocated towards that was really good. The other big news is that Tim Burke is, is retiring. Yep. That's how I feel about that. Yeah, he's gonna be leaving, and so they're asking for people to be on the committee to, like, to the hiring committee, but one of our DA members was hoping that, you know, maybe some small library directors would be able to help out, you know? Yeah, I'm not sure, he just said he wanted people to, if anyone's interested. But that's not something I have time for. Gotcha, okay. So yeah, so that's the, the big news for him. April. Till he'll be here for you a while. A long time. Well, I've been director for seven years and he was direct, I don't know how it's been, been a really long time, it's gotta be at least a decade if not more. Yeah. Yeah, some big changes, so. Insurance, so I got an email from Jen Van Dusen, and she is recommending that we get employee, excuse me, employee practices liability coverage. It would cost $537 annually, would provide a limit of $500,000 in coverage with a $1,000 deductible. I told her I would put it out to, to you guys, so we can decide what you want to do. We've never had employee practices liability that I know of. It covers, uh, it covers the library against an employee accusing wrongful termination, discrimination, harassment, anything like that. She did send me the paperwork for it.
A little press here. Isn't it mandatory?
No.
Okay, so we've never had it before?
It's a rider that goes on the liability package form.
I can send you all the PDF that she sent.
It doesn't, it doesn't help us if the public should.
No, internal, right.
Which I think based upon our staffing, you know, I, I, but I think Kim was planning on going nuts.
Like, you know, you never know.
You know.
No, that's already covered in the trustee, trustee employee, or we got insurance, the director, the actually director and, yeah. Yes. It's if the, if an employee was ticked at us who wanted to sue, this insurance recovers. There's six of us. Yeah, so.
I, I think that's a little. I mean, I think that's a nine more. Lot more internal than we have, like the internal one, yes, because.
Not recently. I assume that we've scaled it to something else.
It's a minimum premium, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it's fine, I heard $310, which is
It would be
actually inexpensive.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably a minimum premium.
It would be through Chubb. Yeah, I mean, I've got like the 61-page
Yeah.
thing, if you guys want to, I can, I'll send it out.
Why don't you just send me the entire policy, but just send me the general description of coverage?
Did she have like a bullet point presentation that she has?
Yeah. I'll send, you know what, I'm just gonna send it to everybody.
Thank you.
And then you guys can decide and we can make check it out later. Right, so.
You start to get that in more time, all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, I can understand it, the circumstances, but.
I'm sending it to everybody, just so no one feels left out.
That's just, that's separate policy than the
Yeah, and we get, Chubb is what we get our directors and officers through, so it would be the same one. I did just get the pay, I just made the payment, though, for our liability insurance. And that was about the same as what it was last year, I don't think it went up or down.
Property and liability.
Yeah.
20, 2300 or whatever, that's a good deal. I wish my church was.
That's good, that was on the title of your
I was, we were worried that it was gonna go up, yeah. So, yeah, that's, that was where that all, but
Is there any timeline on this, or?
I don't think so. He didn't say there was, he just decided. Mull it over and then, yeah, definitely. Just so, oh shoot, I forgot, I was gonna bring in, well, I'll bring it out later. We have a thank you note from the woman, God, I can't believe I'm forgetting her name, the girl who won the scholarship last, over the summer, we got a thank you card for that. Am I blanking? Was it a Kier Simachi?
No, no.
That was before. I don't remember it at some point.
Website, right?
Yes, actually, we can. We also got to thank you because I donated a box of books to the pantry for kids, and we were pretty happy about that, so we'll keep throughout the year, giving them books to give up at the pantry. I don't think they want any run right now, because I just gave them a big box, and I don't know how many they dealt through.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, throughout the year, if you hang on to I mean
They like to make sure that everybody gets a big box.
We can always use children's books, just because we're also give it, we give it out at parties, at summer reading, all that stuff, we give away children's books, so, I mean, if you have like a couple of boxes that we could just store up in the attic, that would picture books, picture books, gen, junior novels, graphic novels, graphic novels are huge. Young adult not so much.
I'll see what they got.
Oh, yeah, then that, that works, that's definitely Oh, right, Katie, I forgot, yeah, thank you. So glad that website's up today. Let's see, we hosted the veterans group for their annual meeting, thank you so much, Mary Ann, for being here, because that was, uh, Alden was like, no, we don't need to go to the soccer banquet, and I'm like, you need to go to the soccer banquet, so it was, it was a good, good event for us, yeah, appreciate that. I already told you that I spoke about meeting with the senior groups, brand committee meeting, expired cards, okay, so another big thing is the Children's Room Project Updates. So after I submitted my my report, I got an email from Megan and Paul about, with more updates. So what I did receive from them, that's important, is that they said they didn't, they asked, or sent out requests for bids from two companies for the hazardous material surveys, and they only got one back, and the one that they got back was from somebody that they worked with all the time and is really good, and is usually the lowest price, so they were comfortable sending us over that, so to try and see whether or not we wanted to go ahead with it. Let me just pull up her email so I can tell everybody what she said. Uh, let's see, so we have to get that done, and I have the contract that she sent over for everybody to take a look at. It was going to cost, I think, 2200, 2200 to look for asbestos, lead, PCBs, just the interior space, and that'll include labor's material samples in the report. They're going to do, and it would just be in the kids' room, it would, that's the only scope of the so that they wouldn't be doing the entire thing, because that would cost us even more. So, I will send this around if anyone wants to read that. I'm gonna give it to the lawyer first.
But also the, the
Upstairs and
Yeah, like everything, everything's gonna get touched, so like the storage room and the
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, that's what, that's what I, that's Yeah, we So she said, we requested proposals from two local firms. Sorry, I've got any glasses, I'm trying to get used to reading. Only one firm responded, it was a firm we like working with, typically has the lowest fees, so we would recommend moving forward with a proposal attached. So that needs to be decided on, and then they were able to start assembling the construction documents, they're about 50% complete. They do want to set up a Zoom meeting with me and whoever is interested, committee, staff, board members, for the week of the ninth, to review where we are, make decisions, selections, and continue going with the process. And it will be also, in order to complete the construction documents, once we have the results of the hazardous material survey. So I'm gonna send out a Zoom, or I send out like a doodle poll that when everyone can meet and who wants to meet and all that stuff, and we'll do that on the week of the ninth. But I think we need to decide on that, so that we can get moving on that, and see what other people, if we can. Don't think so either. Yeah, I, I dug and dug and tried to find something, but I couldn't find anything from the last couple of projects we did.
Sorry, can you just, what was the Zoom meeting, what do you suggest?
It's a doodle poll, I'm just gonna send out
What, for what kind of?
Oh, for the construction project, to go over general, yeah, updated, updates and about where things are. And to make decision about, you know, where we're, where we go from there. So the other thing, so I did, she was here for a long time, she measured, she said she got everything she needed. But one thing I did talk to Paul about is that he suggested that we hire our own electrical and mechanical contractors, so you know, because we have relationships already with people like, you know, John Porta, who does the furnace, and he's the one who gave us a quote, and then same thing for Mike Colleen. He said that it'll be cheaper than us hiring an engineer, who then will hire all those people anyway, so. And we're pretty free to do what we want to in terms of, we don't have to hire, no, we don't have to do certain things that, because we're an association library. So that's, that's as far as, as much as I know at this point from all of this.
I, I don't remember, I think you probably know, but I don't remember. This is 2200, or hazardous material survey costs a lot of the grants, like we take up a lot of grant money, turns out
I don't think so, because it wasn't a part of the grant. It's not listed, though, as a part of the grant. I don't think we did.
We not, I think we did, because we didn't tell them.
Yeah. I think so. I can double check with, with Paul, and if I, or excuse me, with Tim. Do you happen to know?
We do, now, right now.
I mean, in general, the broad, the broad, you know, a broad definition of renovations within flu inspections or because you can't go forward with work without it, so it's required by the contract. Correct?
Yeah, I think the, the issue is just that, that grant application lists some very specific
What?
items and costs. So it's not in there, I mean, I'm not, I'm not arguing one way or the other, I'm just if it's not, I think that's why, it's because you have to be very specific what the items are.
Yeah.
We are
Yeah, I'll I'll ask both of them.
Discretionary fund, if it added there. About 5,000.
I mean, we are, we do have room in the repairs and maintenance line so far, and, and because we're not doing windows this year.
Yeah, we do have another 2200 is in there.
Yeah, we could, we could, we could be covered if, if that's the case, and maybe that's what's better.
Yeah, that would be better, like, make a, make an addition.
I think to keep things moving, otherwise, we're gonna have to find somebody else and go all over.
The winners, so. I guess, should we do this official, so let's get a motion to approve the
Yeah, for the minute, do I just keep it with?
I could, I could
A new line?
Oh, I always have the next
Yeah, just new line, but like within
Motion to block that.
Yeah, so a motion to approve the bid for the hazardous materials survey. We can correct, whatever. So do we have a motion for that, and then a second, then we can discuss it?
I'm moving
Okay.
Hazardous materials, right?
And Scott, are you seconding it?
Yeah.
Okay, so discussion, is anybody concerned that we should get, we should pursue another bid?
Didn't he say you tried to reach out to other people, and sort of you don't want, so?
Scott, see, look, all in my head.
I mean, you can rely on Paul, one would assume that, you know, he works with these folks, he didn't get a bid unless someone knows of a hazardous material, it's, it's real who might come out. I mean, maybe we're in call, what I would do is let's approve going forward, and I'll take a look and see if there's some sort of hazardous, I don't even know what this report is for, other than it sounds like it's a requirement.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't even know what to ask for, there are plenty of abatement companies floating around.
Well, I can send you the, I can send you the document.
No, I, I think we ought to go ahead and approve it, and I'll put them on Mars. Anything out there.
It looks like it references some New York stuff, so I don't know, it could steal from or whatever, I don't know, maybe, but
You just can eat too many spices.
Yeah, what they're looking for
We're near the border.
What they're looking for is asbestos, lead, PCBs, that's what they're looking for, those, those three things. And it's one interior space and you get longer material samples and reports. So they pulled the samples, they send off to the lab, test them, report back to Paul. And Paul will make sure that he has everything he needs.
So let's tack on to that, that will pay for it, out of the repairs and maintenance line.
So do you want me to wait until like Monday to send that back over to them?
So, all in favor of approving? No, okay, all opposed.
Okay.
Who carries?
Look at that, we conducted real business, guys.
Unanimous. Motion is unanimous.
Most of our business is casual, we, when we have to do official business, we get a little
Dude, what are we doing?
Okay, so we've got that, we're gonna send around something from, we've got a night. Did he indicate what kinds of decisions made to anything?
No, I, that was it.
Would be nice to have a favor of progress.
Well, that's what he's gonna do, yeah, yeah.
He really, he, you could have a contract with bids, that's like that.
No. Gonna sketches.
Yeah, because you have
Yeah. So one of the things about the construction, Jody was asking, and I, obviously, we don't have a timeframe at this point, what's gonna happen, but she has a brother, her mom's brother is ill, and she is hoping that he will be okay, like be around for the opening of, of this, so I told her, you know, we're trying to move as quick as we can, because we obviously want to get it done, but, you know, we just don't know, so we'll see where it goes from there. The, so other than that, our taxes for 2023 have been filed. A nice fat bill from the accountant for that, which I'll be making a check out over the week, or next week. It is, it is, yes. Oh, it's not in there yet, no, no, I haven't, it hasn't been paid, I only got it yesterday. Yeah. Um and one other thing to consider or to that I'm going to ask about. December twenty-sixth is usually a very, very slow day and. It tends to be a day that. No one wants to work because it is so terribly slow, so I'm just asking, putting it out there, if anyone would be object to having the library be closed that day to give the staff. A nice break from the holidays. Um if not, we'll obviously work it out, but that, I just want to put it out there, we don't have to. Talk about it yet, I just. It's Thursday this year, yeah. So. I mean, because we're gonna be, we're we're closed the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, so this would be adding the twenty-sixth, but I know that it's. While schools are. I know, it's wonderful. Tuesday. Okay.
I would be surprised if anyone comes to the library on the twenty-sixth.
It's usually. Or you have a key though, right? So is that. Okay. Thank you very much, because that. I think that will um, it gives it, I think that it. The day after Christmas is really hard to come in, especially when no one's here and no one comes in, then it feels like, what am I getting here, so. Okay, so. All right, I think. Yeah, I think that was it. Oh, sorry, the digital content. If anyone's interested, this shows you what our digital content usage is, which is pretty. It's very interesting, I think at least, so um. You can see our video usage is up two thousand three hundred and fifty percent over the last quarter, so. Um but it just has a lot of interesting information there to to know, so.
We seem very on the uh perennials and I certainly know, I personally don't think about that.
We could definitely promote that more. I've tried. Oh, she's, she's fantastic. She's so great. So I'll ask her to promote some. Your magazines and we have thousands, we have thousands of magazines available to our patrons. I don't think they know about it either. I mean, you have to kind of look for it. Yep, so. Uh we can definitely promote that. We also have things like TV shows on Hupa and movies and so there's a lot that can be offered. Your digital stuff, so. I'll make, I'll ask Sadie to do some more stuff on that. Um the one thing that is kind of fun too, to see the print checkouts versus, you know, and how. It is still going up, like our print checkouts are still going up, I don't, I mean, we're. As of twenty twenty-four, we're definitely higher than we have been since the pandemic. We're not at pre-pandemic level, I think in twenty eighteen, but. It's still, it it still continues to rise, which in my eyes is a great.
Interesting to see the comparison and the the COVID effect, so you know, it's just, yeah, it's kind of a.
I find these interesting. I feel, you see, that's just statistics and all that. Twenty-six percent of our digital content is our total checkout and seventy-four percent is physical content, so we're still, you know, when people say, oh, no one ever reads books anymore. Here's the proof. Yes, they give. Okay, that's it. I'm sorry, it took a long time.
All right, we're gonna be.
Okay, after the uh account list, uh after the baby. They said, well, Sarah is the senior member on. Well, that's how they put it, because she's, she has the ability to open up the security for Tim and I or. Jennifer to look at it and upon approaching this, Sarah said, first of all WTO. And then, you know, what uh she has no idea what they're talking about. So I guess we're just gonna have to go sit down with them again, because I don't have, when I open up the the website, I don't have access to the CD. And you don't either, and Jennifer doesn't. The only person that does is Sarah, but she can't remember her password. No, I know, I know what his CD is, I can go sit down with.
I have. I know, but I have a phone number for you. Someone named Danielle Brandt reached out to me and I'm just remembering because we're now talking about this. Um um and wants to, she called me, she said, hi Sarah, it's my email. Richard reached out to Broadview regarding online access. If you could give me a call, so she wants Sarah to call, but she emailed my email.
No, that that was, you know, she told me the same thing. She wanted Sarah to call. Yeah, Sarah to call and Sarah.
She said, I can, I can explain how we provide him access.
If she tells me Sarah has to call, I'm not gonna call her. I'm not gonna tell her.
And what's crazy is she's not listed on the account. We go into business admin, she cannot list it.
I know, I mean.
I can call him and say, I got an email. And Sarah's not listed anymore. What do you want me to do? Like, let me call him. I'll call him.
Call him and see, I mean, they're very nice. They're very nice to do this, and I love these people because how you say they did it to us last year. They're really, they really were really nice last year, so. It was easy enough to set up the the CD. I just like to see how it's doing.
We did get, no, the.
Get a statement?
With the statement, it's on the statement, yeah. Which I have the statement, I already printed it out. Uh it's made two hundred and twenty-six dollars, so and you can see that in the interest. I made a new line on the. Okay, so in the interest column, there is, um I broke it down into, we break it down to a CD file, so.
Do the P and L, I'll make sure I keep the interest in.
I'm pretty sure it was. Sure, um I'm pretty sure though it was, since you opened it, it was like two hundred and twenty something.
So based upon, we're still doing okay, uh. Total budgeted expenses are one thirty-three and we're like one oh eight, so we're hanging in there. Just, I don't think the insurance payment.
When did you print that? When did?
Yeah, just the one, the seven fifty-one is in here, not the twenty-two hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, this, I printed this Friday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I went in and looked at it Friday.
I did a bunch of bills.
Yeah, I know, and I I signed them all on. I would say estimate right now is about a hundred and fifteen is out, the total expenses. On a budget of one thirty-three would be a good guess. So we still, we still have a. Little bit, a little bit in a cushion yet. I figured out where the. Program expense is really. Very light compared to. Because it's a budget of a hundred and twelve and it's, you've only spent eighty one. Does that sound right?
No.
On the second page. Operations expense, I'm sorry, but program expenses in 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 line with operations expenses.
Um we haven't. We haven't gotten an oil bill yet, which we should be getting. Yeah. Yeah, and the rest of payroll.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's fine, I was finding out, and I mean, I think.
Um so. So this share, the certificates, which mature on April tenth, it's got two hundred and ten dollars and seven cents. So from the ninth of October to the thirty-first of October. Okay.
Okay, sorry. And we'll, we'll talk more about the budget because we're gonna talk about the next year a little bit.
Yeah.
So moving on to the committee's report, uh Stanley submitted, who we have in this meeting. Um actually, that's useful, things that need attention, which I think we can focus on. So uh trivia night, obviously, uh I think we all feel really, really good about how that went and we just, uh I think it's got legs. He was, uh she suggested sending out a survey to attendees. I don't think she's done that yet, but I think it's a good idea. But I think we've got a lot of ideas for what we could do moving forward. I don't know uh if people. Want to try to capture that stuff now while it's hot, um and then meet, uh maybe. Right at the beginning of the new year to try to like come up with a plan of like, here's what we're gonna do. You know, some discussion about should we do two of these events? Is there another similar event we could do? Is there? Uh and to put some, put some dates in there and and planning. Uh but do people have any um quick things they want to share? I I know generally it seems like we've gotten a lot of positive feedback. We've gotten some feedback that people wanted more questions, maybe a little bit more pop culture.
I think that was the one.
So, so we're not totally um done yet.
I did give you that.
Yeah, so, but we haven't gotten in, I think, all the expenses, right?
Um the expenses that I have so far are the alcohol, the postcards, the U-Haul, the food, the sandwiches, and then whatever credit card fees. Kate, I put those into the expenses.
Is there something that you can send a breakdown of that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yep. So the sandwich was worth four fifteen online. Um so if we take just those expenses, our net profit was thirty-seven eighty-seven.
Oh, I have credit cards.
Yeah, yeah, I figured that, we should put those in.
So I mean.
Cool.
Almost that, oh, four thousand is our goal.
Oh, okay. All right.
So, and so we have one, we have the winner donated back some money.
The winner of the.
Yeah, they donated.
What was the fifty fifty?
Five eighty total with three ninety to the end. So we made three ninety off. Was it three hundred on the silent auction? That's about right.
Uh the silent auction was four hundred dollars.
Hey, better than I thought.
That's good.
I'm not sure it's, they break into the, I don't, I don't know what was, but I was wondering is like, especially if we think about doing. More than one of these a year, or something like that, does it become, should it be less? Try to raise money every.
Yeah, I'll take.
And we don't have.
The decorations were nice, it's just.
I think even if you're. Like, we do that a lot at our um rescue, um return, we make so much money on it. And if everything's donated, it's costing nothing.
Yeah, that's true.
You know what I mean? It's kind of like, whatever you get, you know, you know what I mean? Um so how much did this?
Four hundred.
Four hundred.
But I know what you mean.
I think it could have been showcased, but.
Oh, I think so too, because you didn't really know.
It was hard, you know, there were a lot of tables up in the top, so you felt kind of like you were stepping on them to go.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, yeah. Do you know how much the um beer and wine were at, or do you not know that yet?
It was two twenty.
So we made?
Oh, how much we made? Oh, no, sorry, yes, two, that we made was seven seventy-nine.
And that's probably including the tips in there too, right?
I didn't know.
That all went in.
Oh, so that was in tip, that's, that was tips then.
Yeah, because we had to keep the, we needed the ones, so we just kept taking the tips. And throwing it in, and at first I was keeping track, but then people would be like, oh, here's a ten, keep the change, but we didn't have the change, like, it was too hard to.
Sure, sure. Well, in cash, we had six hundred and eleven dollars and then the rest was all on credit.
So the other thing is I looked into, because we, I I think we need a larger space. I mean, it's kind of fun over there, but it's also kind of a mess in a way with the. Our logistics and the kitchen and everything else. So the fire hall, the rental is only two hundred and fifty dollars, which is less than the chairs and. And you have a full kitchen, you've got refrigerators, you've got all of the tables, all of the chairs, you have AV built in, um you know, parking. And if if we get this many people, like I originally thought that was kind of a big empty, but like, I think it wouldn't be if we have.
So over there, it was free, but we had to rent chairs. And what was the chair rental? Okay, so it would be cheap, right, right, and cheaper to go there, pay the money and then be able to have more people.
And we don't have to, you don't have, it simplifies the logistics, we don't have to move so much stuff.
You know, and next year, Braylon's not gonna be here, so he's not gonna be able to.
And then he told me, I wasn't there before, but like what you guys had to do to get that kitchen.
Yeah, usable, right. It's not a, it's not a commercial, it's not a rental, it's their personal area. So it's great that they like to do that, right? And it was a great way to get an idea of this, but I think, yeah.
It would save us a lot of money.
Yeah.
Because the whole, the U-Haul and the chair rental were four hundred and fifty-six dollars, so if we just went there, we'd get to two fifty and that would be out, so.
And just the use of our regular kitchen.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I think that's, you know, the way to go.
Um so can we take other suggestions too?
Yeah.
Like well things. What I was thinking is, what if we, when we did some kind of registration? Because I was just thinking about the food again, if we put it, because I know um. I had to do something for work, a union thing, a dinner that I had to do, and I just put on there, it was just in the. Survey thing, because people didn't have to sign up, like, um. Any food restrictions and what are they? So that's kind of how we know, so then that way we don't have to. Spend extra money on things that we won't, might not need.
Definitely could do that, and that's an easy thing to do, so. Make sure.
On the food subject, I was, I had two thoughts, um well, actually, I have three thoughts. One, I was wondering about um like a comfort food kind of thing, where maybe even we can cook some of that, like mac and cheese and. Chili or, you know, just a big, very mess. A little messy, yeah, but if we had more space.
Yeah, but it's a different kitchen. I was kind of thinking the same thing.
Yeah, because they come with sandwiches, which is, it's nice, but I I mean, it might be an idea, I mean.
The other thought I thought was like, everybody likes tacos, like, I do like tacos. But I mean, to me, that's a pain in the neck, but.
It went great for, it went great for Tina. Trivia and tacos, yeah, tacos and trivia. Stations.
Yeah, remember how long that takes though? At the one station, and that was where the line back though.
Yeah, but if we had a bigger place.
You have to just have the big platters still.
Every summer out of there, like two hours. So still.
Not that you were counting or anything. Not that you were counting or anything.
And I mean, it was just something that I was kind of just like looking at a little bit. I can kind of share it with you guys, like if we wanted to do something. A little bit more. Like, if we wanted to do something a little bit more than sandwich neighbor food, that might be something. Obviously, it would have to be within.
Right, right, yeah.
But it might be, I mean, if, if this, and I, I'll look at it while we're talking about something else, but if the sandwiches were four fifteen, and this was for a hundred people, I think we could even do something under that and have it, I mean, if we wanted to go that route.
Yeah.
But I do like the taco trivia.
I think, I think, I think we'll get all of our ideas out, and then we can go the. What, what's that?
Margaritas.
Um, one other thought.
But we had like the license.
That's an event, it's a question.
Yeah, well, that was what it was. Specifically.
That thing.
So it could be any.
Oh, any kind of liquor, I don't know.
I don't know, I have to look at that. Sure. So restrictions on where you could buy it. Sure, so.
Okay.
Uh, the other thought I had was, um, thinking about how we are, how we do our brunches, the brunch, the midwinter brunch. We could do that as, like, you know, trivia brunch. Um, and then it could just be easy brunch foods and bagels and coffee and all that, and it could be a different vibe for like, you know, um, the cabin fever.
Yeah.
Just a thought, if we decide to do more than one. That could be fairly low key, you know?
Mm-hmm. I like it.
I just like the one big one. That, there were people, so I remember that last.
With like. So maybe, like, do this again as an annual, like, people really. And I actually talked to a number of people who wanted to come but couldn't, because they had other things going on. And if we came close to the hundred.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? If we had it someplace else and we could accommodate more than a hundred. Doing it, I agree with you, doing it once.
One, one big one idea, I like the idea of like a little trivia contest, like a lunch or something. I don't know if you can get, get faster than.
Really, what surprised me about this is that, what I didn't realize is that there is a trivia constituency.
Yeah.
That's who won.
And, and, and that there's probably a sufficient demand to support multiple things, and it's not, I don't know that you just wanna do it once a year, whether you wanna work and do these things, cause it's a lot of work, that's a different issue. But it sounds to me like there's not enough to do with the community.
Do you think it would be good?
I actually, I mean, because I've never seen that have absolutely no interest in the library. Now, that's not my way of criticism.
It's actually not what we hope, you know, they're the trivia.
There are a lot of people.
Yeah.
I mean, like, you ate in a millisecond so that you could eat, cause they were just, they were staring at your table, like, you were at, you know, like going to the church and you're sitting.
That's how it was.
Cause some of the people who were there sort of like organized. So, my, it's just, my sense is that probably run two or three of these things at times of the year, and probably get a similar number of. Um, which, I'm not, again, I'm not, it's, it's a lot of work, but I'm saying like, it's different than a library fundraiser, because I think this has its own legs.
Right, right.
And then it's just a question of is it worth the effort? Do you have volunteer power to pull it off?
Right.
I mean, my sense is that you guys created a really nice structure. You've learned how to do it. The next one won't be as difficult. Um, and it won't be a, you know, there'll always be surprises, but it strikes me that it's something that if you can generate, you know, three to five thousand dollars per, per event.
It's worth it.
It's worth it. I'm just, that was just my view. I, I, I was really pleasant.
And I think too, since we, we did it, we kind of know now.
Yeah.
Certain things, like, I think it'll be so much easier the next time we do it, cause now we kind of just learned.
Yeah.
You know, like experiencing it.
Okay.
Yeah. To do it again.
I'm always saying, I'm always saying for audience, what I say.
Start doing trivia night.
You know, I was thinking to the word of success, to do something that, just like a fun, you know, not fundraiser, but here in the library now, you know, once a month or something, but I like the idea of having it. Let's just make it a big event.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. We could say, it's like you know, during the next three, two, and they've called the two winners, or, uh, you know, there's different, there's different things to talk about for it.
See, I didn't realize it was such a big market for it.
I had no idea.
So how about if we, um, you know, we can continue to gather any feedback and ideas, and let's meet in January in a separate meeting maybe, and kind of hammer out what we think we wanna do for a plan.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think we do have the potential, as we've talked about the budget thing, that, that we could expect that we could put in two of these events, um, and maybe hedge the amount by a little bit, you know, I think seven thousand or something, um, total, but I think there's that potential, so.
I agree.
Um, and I think, I mean, I, I know I did, I think it seemed like everybody enjoyed helping make it happen, you know? It, it's not such a slog of a thing to do, you know, it's kind of fun to do, so.
And I think that if we have a better facility, a facility where we're not bumping tables and chairs and all of this stuff.
Yeah.
More space, and that way too, it could showcase more for tire and auction, we could have a nice area for it.
Right, and the kitchen would be easier to work in, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Um, cool. Thank you. I was also gonna say Chipotle, you can do like catering from Chipotle. We felt like, I don't know how expensive it is, but I've been to parties where, and they do like the thing, guacamole, I think.
Oh.
Like, all the time.
I didn't know that they did.
I've been to a couple. Party or something.
That's good.
I don't know how, if it would be prosperous for that many people.
Maybe they have a nonprofit rate.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we can say, hey, everything, you know, give them their advertising and.
Yeah. Chipotle.
That would be a bad thing to do. It's what we do for our ice creams, Stuart's, you know, they do all the ice cream for the ice cream sundaes, and we send them pictures.
No.
No, they're not.
Not the fact. They did, they do. They do.
Yeah, we're on a tire event. Tried to do events there, so it has some.
Yeah. Okay, awesome, so.
Our house would be a great agreement.
Yeah.
Wanna make sure at the end, everybody, we'll do, we'll do, we'll talk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, just moving along. Yes, so, uh, getting the word out, so Christmas swap, Christmas Santa, margins of comparison, we talked about all that, and we're getting them. I don't know, website, Mary, if you need your bio. And Sadie.
I've got Sadie, Sadie's on there, I just have to, she's, I just have to write her. She's very uncomfortable talking about herself, so, and I've written everybody else's.
Um, okay.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you wanna just give me like some bullet points.
Okay.
You know, otherwise I can just say you're a teacher at the April Park School. Yeah, that's fine.
And then Kara hopefully, hopefully listed out some things that I think things to highlight in the equity challenge, I think, try to assemble things. So I don't know if that actually works or not, but, you know.
I'm not sure what that is.
So Upper Hudson has a, um, challenge that, I think it's over a couple of years, where if you uh, do certain things that address equity challenges, um, you get, I don't, you get points or.
You get points, but you, we can earn money towards the, for the library by doing, by meeting certain challenges.
So then that's good.
How accessible is the library to, you know, I mean, there's always, there's the things that you have to do, um, legally, like Americans with disabilities, but how, you know, do we have a station that could, um, help, or do we have, um, technology that would be good for people who don't, can't see? Do we have adaptive equipment for, you know, all that kind of stuff? But then it also goes into how are we, um, how do we do staff training? Are we doing training on equity? Are we doing training on, you know, diversity? Are we doing so? And then a programming, doing programming on that, so we're trying to.
The more you do, the more you.
Yeah. Potentially. Yeah.
Anything else on branding marketing? Scott, did you have any policies this time?
Uh, I was pretty worried. I don't have any copies here, but there are three policies. One was, it's a, it's not really, we don't pay our employees.
No, we do pay our employees. We do.
Like a nice one. I didn't have any comments, but it's better. Now I'm going to, we have a, uh, here of information law. Have a lot of policy, while we're not obligated to involve with or provide documentation, we have a policy whereby if we're announced, you can provide documents. Let me just ask you, in the last five years, how many requests for documents did you have?
Zero.
Okay. We have a perfectly adequate policy which provides the opportunity for someone to ask for documents, and I think it's sufficient.
So.
It's fine. If you wanna circulate them so people can see what they are.
Correct.
And I didn't have any issue with it. The only one that I thought was surprising was the employees with kids policy. Which was in a really strange way, I had never seen anything like that before.
It was.
I don't know the story.
It was a very, very long time ago.
Where I was here, staff would bring their toddlers to work, and someone got hurt at one point, and it was like they had to figure stuff out.
Like, come up with a policy about.
Basically, what that kind of policy, at least why you should be, is that employees of the library shouldn't be bringing their children to the library where they're working. Which is not saying that if you have children who can be in the library independently, that's not what that's about, but it's like, you can't in lieu of daycare, you can't have your kids working in the workplace.
So one of the things that was really helpful for someone like for Rebecca and for myself, is we did bring our kids. That was one of the things that was like, okay, we can bring, great, we have a job where we can bring our kids with us. So, that's my, my only concern would be that, you know, if we have someone who's great and who's just taking care of their child, and who's being able to, you know, to do both of the jobs at once, do we say, sorry, can't do that anymore? We haven't had this issue since my boys grew up. Everybody else, I mean, Elaine will bring her kids to, you know, Elaine's kids come in, but they're teenagers now, so that's. You know.
So that's, that's sort of what the issue is.
Right.
I thought the policy was
They can.
Curious. It was, it was elliptical, it wasn't direct, it wasn't prohibitive.
Right.
And it sort of said, no, but maybe not. So that may be something that we should think about, play with. I looked at it and said, that's not the way I write it, but I think the clear, the clear is just say, can't bring your kids to work.
Right.
Um, that's not an issue for us.
It's not right now, but should it become one? Do we need a policy that says, you know, this is just the way we do it, you know, so. But if you, I, you know, if you wanna write something to figure it out.
But I think the question is, why, writing a policy is, is easy when you have an idea of what you want.
They don't want, right, yeah.
They want, they don't want, that, that's sort of like, it's not like these don't like themselves, they are basically either prohibitions or provide guidelines or procedures. So the question is, is like, most offices, you don't bring your kids to work.
Oh, yes.
This may be a different situation.
Or maybe it's like, you know, yes, your child can come after school on the bus at their grade school age, but if they're pre preschooler toddlers, then sorry, you can't bring, because how do you take care of the toddler at the same time?
Yeah, the issue is whether you need to supervise your child.
Right, right.
If you don't need to supervise your child, and having your, just because you happen to be at a public facility which is open to children of all ages, your children come, and I'm.
Right.
Well, and what do we say? Don't we have a thing about how old are you supposed to be to be here on your own?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Without a parent.
Without a parent, right, which essentially is what we're saying, like, if your, if your parent is working here, they're not here at the time, right? Like, they're.
Eh, kind of. Eh, no. Sorry, you're always the parent.
Well, you're not, you're not asking. They, they're, you know. So. So can we send around the two that are good, that you think are fine, others, and we'll prove them, presumably approve them next month, December? And then send this one around for people to.
Yeah, just take a look, I, I think that would be more appropriate, because it's, I sort of looked at it, it's sort of strange, I know what's going on here, but.
Right, yeah.
But it's unusual.
I'll send it all out. And so, and then. Okay. I can send that stuff out tomorrow.
Then Scott? Uh, Billie Brown's, uh, got a report out there, um, I didn't really go over it, uh, people can meet with them there, have a new door, we knew about that, the A D's up, and the windows, we have the bid for six hundred, but we think he's gonna do it until it's spring. So we're not gonna, last time we talked about potentially trying to do it this year, moving money, yeah, but, um, he doesn't want to do that, so we will, we will put that off. Any questions on Billie Brown? Oh, should we met them? Um, so we did have a little bit of an unfortunate incident where, you know how, uh, John Claire and Ray Trapp, I think. Two people were falling in the garden, it's been a story, and unfortunately, um, someone else came in, trimmed back everything, uh, unasked, and, um, without consulting them.
We had a room.
A room, room, alright.
Drive by room.
Person's done stuff. Just. Oh, everything looks really messy on the other.
Can I ask the other one?
So, yeah, so. We direct, we direct. Um, so I've spoken. We have a plan, so next time, let's just, you know, talk to the person, we can, you know, maybe direct George, yeah, needs help, so. And I think you made, you know, smooth things over with John Claire and Ray Trapp, which was good. Okay with it now.
Well, Mary Trapp gave us a lovely donation, so she's obviously not too terrible about it, which is the other part I have to repeat, guys.
Um, and, but it did create some additional work for Blake to do as well, so there's some.
She, she did a whole bunch of trimming, but didn't clean up after herself.
Drive by trim. Policy about that?
We don't.
Oh. Moving along. You did that stuff, you did a great job, it was very, it was very smoothly run.
Um, it was great to have input from Liz, she brought some inspiration too. Yeah, really, much needed.
Yeah, okay, that's like a lot.
Yeah, it was a lot, yeah, we had a lot on new activities and took, got rid of some old activities, and I can get help a little bit different than it.
I think the passport worked well. It seemed like the kids were like, I mean, I was come, you know, I've got my passports finished.
Yeah, so now that we did it, I think next year we can figure out how to do it smoother, cause it's kind of unclear to, when they, what they're supposed to do after they, they like got a stamp at each activity station, so. But, um, yeah, who is going to do that? But it was a, I think it was a big success, yeah, it was fun and. I think the timing is always kind of like we still, the timing of everything is, we have yet to nail it down. Um, in terms of like when people go out to the trunks and then some people do come back inside, but we're already cleaning up. Because everyone else has left and, you know, but.
This year it seemed to go smoother though, nobody complained to me saying, well, I only want to do the trunk or treating, why can't I go out there now? So I think that saying it's going to happen after the coffee and content, people understood that that's just the, the timing of it, so I think it was.
And having some new activities that they weren't like. Oh, yeah, like, oh.
We did this last year.
Every year, so.
Definitely.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, let's see, so we talked about insurance. Director, when you were going to go into executive session, I'm just gonna skip ahead for one minute, there was one other piece of old business. Um, I guess you'd call it, uh, so the AED grants that we applied for, for the, from the um Troy Savings Bank. We, we got it on the second round, so it's not, Tim is going to, we have to schedule.
I'm bringing with. I already scheduled mine. I'm going on the fourth and I'm doing the big one, I figured if they're paying for it, I might as well do the big training, so I'm doing the four, the five hour one. That's like AED, childrens and adults and all that other stuff, so Elaine is able to just train, she can do her own, I got the email. And they gave us the hoods and it was completely free, so.
Great.
Yeah, well, so I'm gonna be here on the fourth.
So after they go through the training, then they get.
And they want us, want someone from here to go to like a ceremony kind of a thing to get the coupon, which I'm happy to do as well. Unless you want to do it then.
No, they do not, um, yeah, I think it's, they're thinking about it, so they are getting one for the highway department, um, and then so. So they, 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 we did CPR training for the highway department, so, and I, I think it was on their plan to get one for the town mall. And what we have to massage with this is, um, the one that has been installed here is technically for summer camp. That was the one that was used as summer camp, and then once summer camp's not on, we're having it here, so now that we're getting an AED, we just, we're going to.
I would assume that that would be what they would use, that would make more sense.
Probably, you know, and then bring it to camp for that one month, so.
Yeah.
Good to, good news there.
It was very good news, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, uh, so I guess, me as a member of the public, do you have any comments? So let's go into um executive session, talk about the director review. Salary related things and then what we can do for the budget, so. So we have a motion to go into executive session. All right, and the second. Okay, Mary in seconds, all in favor? Yeah, I. The door got unlocked, I guess we can.
Sorry about that, I forgot about it.
Okay, so we're good on that, uh, so talking about the budget, um, I think. What we've discussed before, um, that we have, uh, uh, in terms of things that are major differences coming up in twenty twenty five. So, uh, we've already mentioned the four thousand dollars left from the town, uh, for the youth program stuff. Um, we know that we are going to have, um. The cost of book purchases, the Zook bequest is running out, so we are right, actually need to budget additional funds. But we're gonna pay for that. Um, and it sounds like our insurance costs are not. Increasing, um, in terms of what we're, we're concerned that we're gonna have to look at a, a larger increase. For insurance costs next year, but if we're not seeing any increase this year, that's.
I'm just gonna.
Liability was what, it was twenty-three fifty-three last year, I think it was right at twenty-two something. But it's no person's fault.
Yeah, and for some reason I got a fifteen dollar check from the Hartford this week that I cashed, I don't know where it came from or why we got it, but.
Sometimes it's a work kind of order or something that just comes.
Might have been what it was.
Your minimum, so they just said, okay, fine, we'll send you the fifteen dollars. That's, we get one at the church. Now, do you want to meet with Kim first before we finalize the budget?
Yeah, yeah, but I just want to talk about like, so, wait a minute, um. So, a question here, on the fundraising company events. We really only have. You only have fifteen hundred of the budget.
Late sales or something, that's all we had.
So if we think the trivia fundraiser, we can probably, that can be a significant increase. So what's this donation special project seven thousand?
That was something we threw in to try to balance the budget. Remember, we had the, the gal last year who was a specialist in fundraising and she said, well, I can do that. That was a balancing thing, that.
Which, where are we looking at?
On the first page, donation special project, seven thousand dollars.
That's all right, I have.
Five or six of them, sorry.
I can, I'm, I'm pulling it up on my.
Yeah, you may recall during the budget process last year, we, we kind of had the same.
Oh, donation special. So the events category, we want to change up to what?
From, from fifteen hundred to six thousand.
But really that isn't gonna gain us anything because that's seven thousand.
A lot of these discussions that we had at conference last year, we had in subcommittee and then presented the final. So I think that's how we need to do it then.
Yeah, I just want to get everybody at least on the same.
Get an idea of what it's gonna look like.
So essentially, that number that we plugged in as a.
Ten-six is a lot, basically. It's a lot.
Thank you.
But we wouldn't necessarily increase the budget.
Yeah, well, some discussing about whether or not we did want to put five thousand dollars in.
So we have money in this year's budget. I think the anticipated increase in our expenses.
No, let me look on the last page here, the program was coming in, uh.
You're talking about the programming, um, person, right, so we do have, we are paying for programming. Rebecca and actually, um, we're also, because Sadie comes in and helps with story time as well, and so right now. We had budgeted forty-eight hundred for that, um, and we're at thirty-eight twenty-nine.
That was discussed at one point at the beginning of the year, we thought we might want to amend it to.
We, we were gonna try and, and do it, try and get some, like, increase that so that we could have someone specifically, but we didn't, we just chose not to.
And we have the annual appeal budgeted for fifteen thousand, which we're not going to have any idea about until it's too late, really. Although it's going out next week, so, um, but, but still, that's. So that's, that's a, that's a, I think we have to leave that in there as another goal, um. But I certainly wouldn't be comfortable upping that number. And then I think expense wise, you know, there's gonna be some give and take, there's a repair here, there, we, we budgeted too much in landscaping. Um, you know, the copier is more expensive, but I'm not sure that there's anything that's a big ticket item that's going to. Aside from the, the book cost, um, that's gonna be a major difference.
The dues, that's, I mean, it's bigger, but we budgeted it for it and I haven't heard anything from any of them, so. I'll look into that too, but that's, I mean, that's a couple hundred, it's not like it's a big, huge amount.
So really the Zook staff is really, you know, talking about thousands of dollars, not, not just a couple hundred. Right, yeah, and we're in trouble. Does anybody have any other thoughts on, I mean, I. So even with this, so wait a minute.
I said, this is something, you know, it is general, general discussion here, but then we need to sit down and really crunch the numbers and, and give the final. Board on in December.
But this year, so what do we have for miscellaneous? What, what, sorry, I know people, we don't want to grab this line, I just want to.
From miscellaneous what?
Miscellaneous donations.
We have a decent amount, actually.
So because we budgeted that we have two thousand dollars in it.
We're at four thousand and fifty-three.
And then.
And those, actually, that, what's interesting about that, those are your donations like across the desk. Or people who are just sending in a donation because they want to send in a donation, so we're at quite a bit.
So that's, so we're over there, but that seven thousand dollars with the, with the trivia night, we really only. Made up four thousand of that. It's a four thou, I know, I should just look at the total number here, I'm sorry, I'm a witness, my thought process here.
Yeah, two, two pieces of paper you're looking at, you got current here, and then this is, this is much more specific. This is everything, this is a compilation that, you know, you applied a lot of things just to make it easier to understand.
So I guess to sum it up, like, it's, it's, there's, there's a chance that we could meet those two budgets. We could meet that ten thousand dollar budget number in this, between miscellaneous. We're at, we're at ten-four, so, yeah.
So ten, ten-six is certainly, you could put it to eleven if you wanted.
It's really though through sort of the luck of those.
Yeah, and the annual appeal is only, annual appeal, you only made about ten or eleven last year, so, so fifteen maybe or.
So I think, I think we have to sort of be conservative in those areas. If we're, but we're gonna be, point being, we're gonna be at a shortfall.
Well, that's one of the reasons we overinflated them last year, so we wouldn't have a shortfall.
Right, but I mean, we're gonna have the same problem this year, we're gonna go, we're gonna go in, we're gonna, we're gonna be over. What we're gonna be bringing is, we're gonna have to save, we have a stretch goal in our fundraising.
That's, I mean, that's what we're gonna come back with and I had, I don't think anybody has any problem with that. I would like to see to see what we close out the year because right now it looks like we might actually balance.
And we did.
Based on just actual, based on just actual.
The other item though is the, um. Transfer to reserves, which, did we keep that in? I think you did, right?
Yeah, I couldn't, I didn't know how to make it so that that doesn't come, because it's coming out of one account and going into another, it still needs to be. Accounted for, so I don't, but I'm assuming there's gotta be someone who knows how to do that better than me, because obviously, so, so.
But we did budget to put the six thousand. Last year we budgeted to put the six thousand and, and it seems like we should be able to.
You want to show us an expense for six thousand?
So that's our other buffer, because we said we could decide during the year to not actually transfer those funds. But we can this year, so if we do this year, then we have that same buffer next year, which.
I have to, I mean, I really don't want to say anything until I look at this, the year to date broken down by line. Like we've broken out the budget twenty twenty-four, I just don't feel comfortable because there's a lot of numbers flying around and I'm like.
No, I'm not trying to like pin anybody down, I'm just trying to think about these big pictures. But we, what, what we know is that we are, what we're gonna propose is going to be more this year than it was. I mean, we see more in two twenty, in twenty twenty-five than it was in twenty twenty-four, but we haven't.
I would like to see how it actually looks on a line.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's cool, I've just, I guess I just want people prepared because we gotta actually vote on it in the December meeting.
But yeah, we're gonna have a much better, much better picture than, you know, just what, you know, what was. Be ready for a shock is what Jennifer's trying to tell you, you know. But there will be margaritas and, and, you know, Chipotle buffet, so everybody will be happily sated before we drop the box.
Um, I have a budget already set up in QuickBooks. Or, um, so that we can start working on, so I'm just gonna start plugging numbers in and then I'll send it to you guys. I already kind of started plugging some.
Yeah, well, I remember you and, you and Jan had had that meeting. No, I think we're good and, and we'll make sure that if there's anything drastic, then we'll start to give people warnings. As simple as that, I don't foresee anything like that, but. But at least now we know we can throw the fundraiser and hope three thou, four thousand dollars.
Yeah, just like that, no big deal.
All right, motion to adjourn.